All this meeting to order, can I have a roll call attendance, please?
Paul Kaufman.
Here.
Maria Davies.
Here.
Susan Edmondson.
Here.
Ruth Johnson.
Present.
Ryan Wesco.
Present.
Kim York.
Here.
Kim Bailey.
Here.
If you'll join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So I'm going to read our mission statement is preparing each student for a successful and meaningful life. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Motion passes unanimously. We are now on recognitions.
All right. Good evening, everybody. It's my pleasure this evening to recognize some of our fine students and share with you their accomplishments from their recent endeavors, if you will. And I think most people in our community are familiar with our high-quality theater department. And part of what makes them a great department is the fact that not only do they have great actors, performers, and singers, and things of that sort, they also have some very talented individuals who help make things happen behind the scenes, build the sets, do the lighting and the sound. And recently, at the 2018 Missouri State Thespian Festival, they won some awards. And we want to share those awards with you tonight. And their teacher Carla Penatar, I see here, and she leads them and directs them and their efforts. And we have both a team winner here to share with you and then some individual awards. So, and some of the folks have earned both team and individual awards. But as a team in the tech challenge at that Thespian Festival, and I believe it was in the St. Louis area, wasn't it? Okay. We had a fourth-place team overall. There are four team members. So as I call your name, please come forward. First is Becca Basset. All right, Becca, stay up here. We'll take a photo here in just a minute. Also, a team member with the fourth-place tech challenge team is Nick Heim, and he also won third place individually for sound. Also a member of the fourth-place tech challenge team and winner of one of three technical theater scholarships at the event is Peter Diring. And then finally, also the fourth member of this team on the tech challenge and also a first-place winner in the category of lighting is Riley Lynn. And again, any production we see at the high school, they obviously do a great job. So we thank their teacher and all the staff who helped make that program great and congratulate them on winning their awards at the state contest. Now, if you notice, they came in at the last minute. I'm assuming we're prepping for the upcoming, is it the nerd? Okay. April 12th through 15th, so get your tickets soon. Our next recognition is in the athletic field. And, you know, one of the, one of the sporting events that I find extremely challenging, I tried it once in a class in college and don't want to ever do it again, but I admire the folks who do it, is wrestling. It's really intense and very competitive. And if you're in the class that we are at the highest level, it's even that much more intense. But we have a state placer this year. Garrett LaBelle placed sixth in the 132-pound class. Yeah, demonstrate.
I wrestled an eighth grade.
All right. We have one other special recognition of sorts that we want to share with you this evening. And at this time, I want to invite our project lead-the-way teacher, Ivan Robinson, to come forward. Ivan's going to share a few words with you, and then we have something for you as board
Get my crew up here. While they're coming up.
Ivan, come over to the mic so we can.
Do I have to?
Yes, you do.
Two months ago, School Board Recognition Week, I started this project. We were a little slow getting it finished, and of course, we had a snow day on the last one, so we got pushed back. We want to present this to the school board, each one of the members. This was what was done on the new laser etcher.
Oh, wow. Thank you.
Thank you.
But they actually sit on the stand. And we do that. I think Dr. Monses wants a picture, so.
If the students will.
We'll take them for you. Well, this was a group project. We all kind of, we found pictures of you all and kind of, kind of stuff around, had to find pictures. And anyway, this was done with the new laser etcher. That's black granite, absolute black granite.
Let's do, let's do a horseshoe here.
And also, that machine also touched out that acrylic. So anything, we can, we can bring up.
You guys just come on, man. Once you stand behind them, you stand on an end.
All right, Jason, can you get them all in there?
Yes, sir. Okay, I'm lifting up a little high, right here, please. Three, two, one. A couple of them.
All right, for the safety of everyone, I think we'll take the plaques and set them in the conference room over here, so.
We'll take them side by side. Thank you. Tell me that. Thank you. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Robinson, your students, thank you very much. At this time, our guests are welcome to stay if you'd like, but you're also welcome to leave. Now's the time to depart. Thank you for being here this evening, and congratulations on your accomplishments.
Thanks very much.
Now, just imagine what they could do with a CNC machine.
That's amazing. I like the way you think.
By the way, that was on one of the grant applications we authorized last month, a CNC machine. So we should have one next year.
You know, we talk about preparing kids for the high-end technical jobs. There, the last time I heard, it was between $5,000 and $10,000, or five or 10,000 open positions for high-end technical manufacturing, which CNC, that type of milling is included in that, that start at 60,000-plus.
Yep.
So, you know, it's just one more step to make sure that we're preparing kids for, you know, a happy, productive life.
I agree.
They all have a very bright future.
Yes, they do. I love that we provide all aspects. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Motion passes unanimously. We are now on public comments. Where did anyone sign up?
Not tonight.
We're now on informational items. The A-plus program, Dr. Crystal Barr.
Good evening. This is the annual A-plus update. As you recall, A-plus is a scholarship program offered through our state, and it allows our students to have two years of community college tuition paid for if they meet certain criteria, such as attendance, grade point average, good citizenship, and do some tutoring. So this kind of gives an overview of where our kids are. Right now, at the high school, we have just a little over 50% of them signed up, which means that they have that kind of a letter of intent, so to speak. So sometimes that changes over the course of time, but we try to get them in as early as possible. And as you can see, that number grows the more they come along. Sometimes in their freshman year, they might not think community college, and then sometimes by their junior or senior year, that seems a little more attractive to both them or their parents. And then also, certain universities do offer scholarships of some form if a student just meets an A-plus criteria. So I think as parents realize that, too, they realize signing up for this program is really beneficial. So if we go down to the students who have qualified, so that first one is just those who sign on saying yes, but these are the actual percentages of kids who actually meet all of the criteria. And so last year's graduating class, we had just a little over 65% meet all of the criteria. It doesn't mean they all used the scholarship, but they all met the criteria to do so if they so choose. And looking at our postgraduate follow-up, if you scroll down to page two, it kind of gives a rundown of the different years, but our most recent graduating class, right now, we have 111 students who say they're in a two-year college, 199 in a four-year. We continue to make calls to those families. We have about 42 families we are still trying to track down. And we do that in a lot of different ways, phone calls, Facebook stalking, all different kinds of ways. Friends that we know that they have, what are they doing? Because sometimes that last few are a little harder to catch. So we're continuing to grab those numbers, so those should continue to increase. Then if you look at the financial benefits, we get a report from the community colleges that tell us how much financial benefit is actually coming back. This is self-reported by student, however. So if for some reason a student didn't mark Raypack High School, they left that field blank, then it wouldn't come through. So we do have to kind of keep that in mind, because there was perhaps, there could be a margin of error for kids who just didn't mark that they did that. But you can see, there is a lot of benefit that we have from our kids having this tuition. And then the last thing that we kind of always look at is that kind of pre, getting kids ready for that college step. We do offer a FAFSA friendsy night once a year for our families, just to kind of tackle that document. It can be a little daunting. And so we offer kind of some practically one-on-one sit-down, let's walk you through that thing. Because you have to have that filled out in order to qualify for the A-plus program. The state definitely wants to know if you qualify for any federal grants or anything like that first before they offer up money, which is fair. We also have a FAFSA completion project, so we now have a way to be able to track families and see who really has finished, which is very beneficial. We did not have that several years ago, and so it was difficult to know who finished it or not. And this often the student wouldn't know, because it's finished by a parent mostly. So being able to track that and see who has finished it, who's kind of halfway done, who hasn't started it, is very beneficial for our counselors, because they will track down those kids and families and say, hey, do you need help? You know, is there something about the FAFSA that's difficult? So that they can continue to get those completed. Right now, we also have 102 seniors who are on track to complete mobile enrollment for MCC. So there are certain stages and things they have to go through at different times in the year to get that mobile enrollment done. And so just a little over 100 of them have, are on track and up to date. And that could continue to grow as we get further into the spring.
I know records are always a sticky subject, especially once they leave our district. Will the state tell us how many of our students each year actually exhaust all of their benefit? Do they, do they track it that way? Because in that way, I mean, I'm always curious, and how many of our students that go into a two-year program actually finish the two-year program? And I know that those numbers are sometimes hard to track down, but if the state would let us know how many students actually use the benefit for multiple years, it might be an easier way for us to kind of have a number of how many are completing those degrees.
That is not something we can get off any state website. However, it doesn't mean that they're not collecting it, doesn't mean we can't ask. It also doesn't mean we couldn't ask MCC, the Metropolitan Community Colleges, if they aren't tracking, because that is where a vast majority of our kids go.
Just thought I'd be curious about.
Are the Kansas community colleges, are they, are our kids eligible to go to those also?
Go to where, I'm sorry?
The Kansas community colleges?
So we do have some kids go. Now, this, this, we don't give money to Kansas. But we do have some kids who go to the one in Johnson County. They are known for certain programs. For instance, their culinary program is exceptional. And so if you're going to be a majoring in culinary arts, you probably should go there instead. So we have a handful, less than 10.
But the A-plus, you can, okay.
No, no.
Any other questions or comments?
Thank you for how this has improved over the last several years with the information you've given us.
Thank the high school. They do a great job at this, so.
One thing that I think we have discussed in the past, I believe Mr. Wesco brought it up in a previous year, it'd be nice if we could access this program for a high school dual credit. So that's something we need to keep pushing on or asking about.
And I continually work with our refs to push the issue. And fortunately, some of ours are moving up into leadership positions, so we might be able to make some progress.
Yeah, we've got a.
House Bill 2200 has that aspect in it, and it's moving along.
Yeah. And unfortunately, the higher-end folks don't want to see that pot of money being used elsewhere. So they, they're arguing a different story, so. Oh, don't blame them.
All right, thank you, Dr. Barr. We are now on transportation program review. Dr.
Good evening. I'm going to give a quick update on our transportation program tonight. You'll hear a theme tonight through this presentation, and if you've talked to me recently about transportation, that we're not where we want to be with our transportation. We realize that we have areas of growth. We are aware of them. We see the gap, and we have plans in place. I think that we are on the cusp of seeing some really cool improvements. So kind of the theme of this presentation, as you'll notice, is we're not there yet, but we're making strides. Little organizational chart, we've been with Apple Bus since 2004. Mike Oyster started Apple Bus Company years ago and is still the president and CEO of the company and still goes to work every day. As you look through there, one of the nice things that I actually like about Apple Bus is every single person on this organizational chart will answer my cellphone when I call them. And I get pretty prompt response. And as you're aware, there's always room for growth in transportation, but it's nice to be part with, to work with a company that's kind of local. They're one of the 10 biggest, maybe actually 10th, but one of the 10 biggest bus companies in the United States, and they happen to be based in Cleveland, Missouri, right around, right over here in our backyard. So that's one of the reasons that when we had contracts come in, they were very, very competitive, because being next door and being that large, they're, they have several businesses or several districts in Alaska, they sure don't want to lose Raypack next The organizational chart, just locally, Tim Dennis, who's actually here tonight, in case we run into any questions I don't have off the top of my head, but somebody else that I meet with every week, at least, sometimes speak with daily, as we try to take on them the large task of getting our students to school safely every day. Little bit about the mission and purpose of our transportation department, just in general, we work, we work very closely together as a partnership to provide a positive, safe, dependable, and efficient transportation. As we go, as we look at everything, we want to make sure we're improving our customer service and in a cost-efficient manner. And a little bit of our current reality, when the buses start in the mornings each day, there's 53 routes that take off to take care of our East Middle School, South Middle School, and High School and Academy students. Of those 53 routes, 44 of them turn right around and do an elementary route. We also have 36 special education routes, 10 of those being our early childhood special ed. We have six, currently, we have six out-of-district special education routes. Those are the ones that go places like Gillis and Merrimack and Bosco and Ozonam and CCVI. They also provide shuttles for LEAP vocational schools. We send a bus every day to Lee Summit and one to Harrisonville, and then tutoring shuttles of an evening as well. A little bit later, we'll be talking about a ridership report. We have 3,391 students that ride regularly, and I'll talk a little bit about that in a minute. We just did finished evacuation, spring evacuations this, this week, and had right at 2,400 students that got on and off buses in the evacuation practices this week. Talking just a little bit about some numbers, we do have a goal. You'll hear a lot of, like, when we're looking at numbers, you'll see 77 passenger and 71 passenger. We have a goal, even though those maximum passenger ratings are for three per seat, especially at the low, or at the higher levels. Our middle school and high school kids aren't really built to put three in a seat, so we spend a lot of time making, we really strive to only have two per seat. The drivers each day do a head count in the morning and the afternoon. They turn that into Tim. He puts it in a Google Doc that shares with me. That's very handy. If you call me, several of you in this room have called me about the questions, that I can immediately pull up a live document that I'm working back and forth with Tim over at Apple Bus, that shows me how many kids are pretty much taking attendance every single day on those buses. And so we know if there was really room, or if we just need to rearrange their seating arrangement, or what we need to do. So that's very helpful. Monitors, we upped our monitors this year. As you know, we, with South Middle School and the high school, being the proximity they are, it doesn't make a lot of sense for two buses to follow each other throughout that whole route. But as part of that, we wanted to make sure that our sixth graders and 12th graders, although some of us grew up on K-12 buses, that was a little bit of a change. So we did put a monitor on all of those combination routes, and then we moved them around as needed. We also have 16 special education monitors. Bus discipline's always a fun topic. But it is, like I said, the theme here is we are getting better. We're not where we want to be yet, but we're getting, you'll see improvement throughout the entire, all the data we're sharing. If you look at the 15, 16-year, and then last school year, 16, 17, then the third column down here of data shows the, the actual improvement. From two years ago to last year, there was 116 less referrals, of 27 less students, 117 We went from 241 different students being suspended the year, two years ago, to only 124 last year. So we cut that almost in half. When you talk about how many days that was, we went from 1,300 days to 720. So that was a savings of almost 600 days that we didn't have students suspended. So like I said, we want to get that down much lower, but it's headed in the right direction.
Could you, could you talk a little bit about how discipline works? What does it take to get suspended from the bus? You get three, like, when I was growing up, you know, you got three.
Well, there's a, there's a graduated discipline plan. I mean, it starts, obviously, if you throw a heavy object across the bus versus chewing gum, there's different levels of discipline, just like all of our schools have their own handbook. The school company also has a handbook, so there's different levels, starting all the way from a verbal warning, and they may make them sit in a different seat with a new seating chart, parent phone calls, depending on unless it's a very severe punishment. And then you'll just go all the way from two or three days off to five days off to 10 days off. But the bus company works very closely with the building administrator, and then for consistency purposes, I am personally involved in some of those once we get to bigger suspensions. Again, we're not there yet, but some of the numbers, and these are highlighted here in a minute, some of them that are pulled out from previous goals, but from the spring, every spring, we give a survey of all, and it's actually out right now, it closes tomorrow, of pretty much all the departments I work with, including transportation. But spring of 15, spring of 16, spring of 17, soon I'll have the data for this current spring. But our staff work very closely, talk to the students, so they understand, and are able to give us some very valuable feedback. Highlighted, it looks a little funny, because it's all on the three ranges, as a scale of zero to four, or one to five, but I moved it around, depending on which it is. But for consistency, maybe just for clarification, it's kind of a B, was the highest rated score of their choices. That's why that's highlighted across the board there, all three years. So the green arrow on the right shows the percentage gain the previous two years averaged versus the most current year. And as you can see across there, we are trending in the right direction. And so, like I said, we have, we have quite a ways to go, but we're heading in the right Reviewing the goals that were previously presented to you by Mr. Harris, but he had, he had some lofty goals in some areas. He had indicated that by the spring of 2017, they would achieve a score of four or higher on a scale of five on this, on the patron survey and overall transportation performance. Like I said, we still have quite a ways to go there. In 16, it was 33% that were at that four or higher. And then in the spring of 17, we got up to 39%. And like I said, we'll, we'll hopefully see some encouraging news this spring as we continue to make improvements. There was another goal set previously, that the, we'd get a 70, that 75% would choose one of the top two categories on the annual staff survey. That's one we just talked about. As you can see from the arrows and the, and the trending, we are headed in the right direction. We didn't quite get to 75%, but in three years, we went 47%, 51%, 60%. So like I said earlier, and you keep the broken record, we have a ways to go, but we're heading in the right direction. One of the areas that they're surpassing all the goals, in 2016, the goal was for 90% of the buses to pass on the very first run. Well, in 2016, they were at 99%, and in 2017, they were at 98%. And when they say they didn't pass on that first run, I know in 16, that was one bus, and it was due, it was when they went to the LED lights, and there was one of the little LEDs that were out. Well, they've since said, change that rule now, that to fail it, that's got to be 25% of the taillight, so that's helped. And 17, that actually dealt with, when they were climbing under, the inspector grabbed a hold of one of the clamps that holds the muffler, and it, and it came loose a little bit. Well, that failed the bus. So they're very picky, and I don't think they like to give out 100% pass rates, so they like to find some stuff. But I'll tell you, they just finished the 2018 highway inspections, and we did get 100%. So every bus passed the very first time, which is unheard of in a lot this size. Finally, they had a goal to, to decrease each year. And in 15, 16, I'm sorry, on the accidents, on the, in terms of accidents, 15, 16, there was three bus-related accidents, and in 16, 17, there were six. So that's, we strive for zero there. Looking at the scorecard form, obviously, we, we spend a lot of time on our scorecards, but as I explained a little bit ago, those top two categories in both the staff survey and then the patron survey, and just looking at the score, in a scorecard format, the accidents, cost efficiency factor, lower numbers are good for a cost efficiency factor. Anything less than 100 is, is really good. Let's see here, cost per mile, while we did increase, we're still significantly below the state average, and we want to stay below the state average. And then, of course, the highway patrol inspections are trending in a great direction. Obviously, the professional development training, we're basing around the themes of excellence that we use throughout our departments in terms of customer service, high quality of work, high level of efficiency. We are dealing with, we want to be good stewards of the taxpayer dollar. We want to make sure that we have meaningful and effective communication and have outstanding Some of the ways we're getting there, part of the new contract, something we're very excited about, is a system called Zonar. That means live on our, on my computer, if I get a phone call or if, from you or a patron, I can tell exactly, real-time GPS where every bus is, when they stopped, how long they stopped, at what time they were there. And it just takes all of the subjectivity, you know, somebody's watch maybe a different time than mine, that says, well, they were supposed to be here at 6:17, they didn't get here. I can say, well, they were there exactly at 6:18 for 30 seconds. So that is a outstanding feature. We're excited about getting started this coming year. Obviously, the positive ride experience, and we want our, we want our students to feel safe and have a good experience on the bus. So we spend a lot of time, like I'd mentioned earlier, with the load counts. You're not going to have a positive experience if you're sitting between two other eighth grade stinky boys. So, communication, Tim meets with, Tim, either, either there at the bus barn or here, Tim and I meet at least weekly, as I mentioned earlier. I attend all of their monthly safety meetings. It's pretty impressive. You don't realize how big of a, of a department it is until 150 of our drivers and monitors and dispatchers and managers are all in the same room. They go through very intense safety training, and I'll talk a little bit more about the things they cover there in just a minute. But going back, our strategy is really focusing on customer service. I've heard Tim call it the quick-trip model, where you, where one of our patrons are calling in, they need to make sure everyone understands, these are our customers, these are the people that we're serving, and we want to make sure they understand that we're all in. these are our customers, these are the people that we're serving, and we want to make sure they understand that we're all on the same team here. And it does take advantage to get their kids to, to and from school. Our building principals work closely with Apple Bus for utilizing school messenger to get messages out quickly. Moving forward, some of our goals. Just kind of looking at these again, on the staff perception survey, I think it's reasonable to expect, where we're at, I think it's reasonable to expect and to continue to trend upwards by ten percentage points each year. I think those are lofty goals, but reachable goals. On the patron survey, the same concept of moving from ten, at least ten percentage points up. Maintain an average cost per mile at no greater than eighty-five percent of the state average. That gives us a nice benchmark to, to stay, as it's a moving target. And then, up to, at least ninety-five percent. I know they've already hit a hundred percent this year, but I feel that they've set the bar high enough that we're going to hold them to ninety-five percent on inspections.
I might, I might add one comment before we start with the questions. Obviously, with the transition we went through this year, it caused us to, and I say us, Apple Bus, to completely reroute the entire district. So if you can imagine the undertaking, undertaking that might have been, and of course, when you do that much change in a given year, it leads to challenges as you kick off the new year. But I will say, with Brian working on it every day with Apple Bus, they made plenty of adjustments those first two weeks of school to make sure things smoothed out quickly. We had not been collecting daily ride counts until this year. And so that's to Brian and Tim's credit that they were working on that. So, that's the kind of stuff that it takes to actually make improvements over time.
And that was actually going to be my question, you know, because I know the, the start of the year was a little rough. Has everybody acclimated to the new routes, and has everything kind of calmed down from a perception standpoint from, from our constituents?
I've stopped hearing as much. I'm, I'm hoping they understand the situation we're in and, and why we made the decisions we did. I think that it has worked out well. I've spent several afternoons and mornings at Raymore. Some of our concerns were students walking from the Skyview area to Raymore, because that was a big change. And I know that we have some, some students at Creekmore that were now walkers that weren't before. But in terms of the walkers, I think they have acclimated to that change. I'm sure you could find some patrons that would disagree with that, but in general, I think yes.
And the reason that, why I ask is because I don't see as much of it on all the social media pages. So I just was curious if it had kind of calmed down on your end as well.
Well, nobody likes change, and that was, and that was a big change.
Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, a comment and a question. First of all, congratulations on the hundred percent. That, that is amazing, because they don't like to give those out. And a question kind of following up on those. During the year, so it sounds like you are involved with Apple Bus when there are route changes? And, and so, even if it's two months or three months down the line, if there's a reason to change a route, is there always that communication between the district and Apple Bus on route changes?
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
One, one other comment I would share, we've added layers on top of this. Twice this year now, we've had to change some routes because of the road construction. So, again, turn around, change again, make it work as best we can. It's a couple of rough days usually, but we work our way through it, and they're, they're working hard at it.
And, and I'll just follow up. I was asking, I, I think, obviously, we do need to have a great deal of focus on what our, the parents, the customers are saying. But the flip side is, I wonder sometimes we, I wanted to make sure that we're taking everything into account when we're making changes, and it sounds like we are.
And I appreciate any time I've had to send someone to you. They've usually been resolved fairly quickly, and they appreciated that. So thank you.
And I want to thank you for all of your hard work. It has been a hard year with all of the transitions. I know just, construction alone is a nightmare, and just adding the police officer to get the buses and everybody out just recently was genius. So, thank you for all of that. Anything else? Thank you, Dr. Patinko. We are now on middle school grading and reporting update. Dr. Al Volker.
Good evening, everybody. Happy to present a middle school grading and reporting update. When I was putting this together, this was actually the first time that I've put the wolf and the husky on the same slide. So, I really thought that was cool. It was kind of a defining moment, knowing that we're growing and changing. And leading off this presentation, I think it's important to note, that's the philosophy I want us to have in our department, in our district. As we grow and change, we always have a continual improvement process. And this is what, this is about. This is about looking, asking the right questions, talking to our Board of Education, as we've talked on this topic many, many times, and gathering input from that, and then making changes as necessary, because I think that's where we are. In our next slide, you'll see a, a slide that you've seen before, because I really think it's important to note, what are we trying to do with our grades? That they're just accurate and they're fair. They're providing the information to the students and parents, so, and the staff, so they can make informed decisions about where their kids are and how they're doing. So with that, as we talked in, in previous work sessions, we started with a request, say, where is our staff currently on our current grading and reporting practices in the middle school? So we said, we need to give it a little time, because remember, our middle schools added so many new staff members. We added so much. We added the sixth grade, they were pretty much new buildings. So we said, let's get them acclimated, let's let them in the building, get to know each other, and then we'll be, begin this process of reflection on current grading practices. So we did. So, in November and through this December, we had opened quite a while, we surveyed the middle school staff regarding their grading and reporting practices. I sent that survey to you, so you have seen those results and that information. And it pretty much overwhelmingly, it was probably two-thirds, a little higher, that said, you know, we really believe we need to make a change regarding our grading and reporting practices. And when you've got that level of staff saying that, that there needs to be a change, and they listed a lot of very good legitimate reasons, then that's something you need to do, and I think it's in the best interest of the staff. They're the ones who are daily within this practice and process, putting this into, into play. So, we looked at that. From there, then you have to dig deeper. That's when we formed the work group. After we shared the results, we ask and call for people to come join us in this process, and I have a slide just on that in just a second. And then we are working right now. Now, it's very important to say, we've only just begun in this process. We are two meetings in. So, I'm giving you very preliminary information, but I think it's really, does give us a pretty good direction, at least a focus on where we're going and, and what we're trying to do to improve it. So then, we hope, with our goal being by the fall, to wrap up and finish this process. But to communicate, I'd really like to be able to communicate those at a fairly detailed level by June with folks as we move forward. So, this, this summer, there will be some work regarding the get, different focus areas and the different goals that we'll have to do, most likely on our assessments, just to make sure that they align with our, what will probably look like a little more traditional grading practices. So with that, here's our work group structure. We have a lot of middle school teachers. We have about fifteen people on the committee, and they're obviously both from South and East Middle School. We just don't have one middle school represented. We do meet every other time at each middle school, so the teachers only have to travel one time per month. So we've got numerous departments represented. We've got great teachers. Just for example, I've got Dan Garrison and Nora Quinzer and Laura Strebe, as well as our administration, lots of departments represented. And this is an ongoing and open invitation. At our second meeting, we had some others join us that weren't in the first. That's fine. Because we share out, we keep open communication. We share out all our notes, everything that we talked about, what we've decided, or not even really decided, still in the process of deciding, after every meeting with all staff. So they're able to see it. I think that's really why we got some people, we added some additional staff members on the second meeting, which I think is a good thing. So I really respect their input, and I really think we need that as a part of our process. It's extremely important. So, we are also surveying along the way. I currently am surveying the staff regarding some possible draft goals. And I have some, hopefully by, after spring break, I'll have some results on that as well. So we meet approximately every two weeks. Our focus is really continual improvement. So to set the grading and reporting goals for the middle level, determine the areas improvement, action steps, timeline, professional development, how to implement, how to communicate, and then just continually review and reflect on those. Now, these are very preliminary. Okay, we have only just begun this process, but pretty early on, with the impetus, impetus to change, and the group really did say that, these are some focus areas that they would like to expand on and work on. So I really see this as where, kind of the beginnings of this process. What they really thought they needed was some increased student accountability for practice. Sometimes that's homework, sometimes that's in-class, but they wanted to build that into the actual overall grading and reporting structure, whether that's a five percent or a ten percent. We have not decided that. That, it's just, we're just discussing. The second part is, they'd like to report out using, now this is preliminary, using a traditional hundred-point space system. So something that parents, they believe are much more familiar with at the middle level, and might be an easier transition into the high school with that, while using, for example, power standards as our way to categorize assignments, tests, and quizzes. So if, let's speak to English Language Arts, you might have five to six. Power standards could be grammar and sentence structure, writing, those big key components. And then the test quizzes, assignments would fall under each one of those big ideas. It is, teachers inherently sometimes do that in a traditional system, just as a way to categorize. But through that, they could still report out on three or four or five big key ideas, but using a traditional hundred-point space system. So, you'd just be averaging the scores together, as we do in a system, but still be able to see, this is everything under writing, this is everything under grammar, things like that. So, and then the third is develop and use a common and consistent reteach and relearn policy. We've talked a lot about reassessment, retesting, and really truly, the fundamental gist of that conversation is there needs to be some relearning in that. The, the accountability on the student's side and with the staff to work together to say, if you didn't get it, we're not going to continue to assess if there isn't extra practice, if there isn't the work that needs to be done. We have to help the students and the parents. What is that? What does that look like? But just this lottery of additional assessments until they possibly get it right. We want to see the work done and the learning done in a positive way, so they can reassess and be ready to reassess. So we want to develop that at a much higher level. So that's just the very beginning. That's where we are right now. Oh, I went the wrong way, didn't I? So here's our next steps. Our next steps is to continue. As you see on the timeline, we really, our goal is really for the fall, but there's a lot of work to do now in this spring and a little over the summer to be able to do that. We want to continue to seek ongoing feedback concerning the work that we're doing. Communicate grading and reporting changes to parents in the community as we get a little more refined, and then reflect and refine on the practices that we still think are really are beneficial, but we need to fit into a more traditional structure. Okay, that was a lot quickly. I know that. So, do you have any questions?
I, I actually asked for this topic to be added to the agenda. So when you, when you say that it's ready for the fall.
A goal, yes.
The goal is for the fall?
Yes.
That's for implementation in the fall, correct?
The goal would be yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
You know, because one thing I think is very, very important, is that if we are going to be consistent in our grading, you know, from what I understand, the most important grades are at the high school level. Many of the other grades at the lower levels aren't even looked at, so they truly become irrelevant. The ones that are at the high school level are the ones that are critical, because those are the ones that actually determine, you know, college and, and other places.
It's a credit-based system, GPA, yeah.
So I, so I think it's important that we be consistent, that if we're going to have a grading system, that it be consistent with the grades that actually matter. So, i- i- if we're going to look at the high school, our middle school should be in alignment with the high school. That way, the kids can be used to that system as they transition. Many of our, our students are advanced, and they take high school-level classes at the middle school. So, it's just another reason why there needs to be consistency within that system. This has always been a, a huge issue, and it's, you and I have had some spirited discussions. And, and so I'm glad to see this moving forward. And, you know, many people don't, don't know that state statute actually grants the board authority to choose what grading system that we implement. This, they truly wanted this to be a board decision. Now, it's important to have staff input, you know, the people that are actually dealing with it. But I think a lot of times, it's up to the board to decide the direction and the outcomes, because ultimately, we have that responsibility.
Any other questions or comments?
Thank you for all the surveying.
No problem.
I think that's an important part of it.
I, I want to thank you. I, I want to thank you for being willing to receive feedback, to listen to your teachers, to listen to, to the community, and to still hold to standards of excellence and with your expertise in education, but then also working to do it in a way that our community can understand it and that our students aren't confused by. So I, I appreciate all of your work on melding those together, so we can move forward without confusion. So I really appreciate all your work on that.
Can I have a floor?
Yeah.
You know, with the board, and, and since this is one of the things that truly falls under our scope, I would actually like to make a motion to help give the committee some, some direction. You know, I, I think, I think that the fall is a good goal, and I think that it's not something that we should shoot for. I think it's something that we probably need to put in concrete, because I think we've had enough time, we've, we've kicked this around many, many times. I'd, I'd actually like to put a motion forward, and, and I'm willing to adjust the wording of it. We can. Under Robert's Rules of Order, any board member can, can make a motion if something's added to the agenda. How we, how we list it as an informational item or an action item is for convenience. We actually have the ability to make that. And Pam, I, I wrote it out for you, so that you didn't have to. But what my motion says is that I move that standard reference reporting, or SRR, be removed from the Raymore Peculiar School District and be replaced with a traditional grading system that is in alignment with the current grading practices and system utilized in the Raymore Peculiar High School for the two thousand and eighteen, nineteen academic year and for all future years.
So my concern on that is that we, and we briefly discussed this, is that we use the standard reference reporting in our elementary schools, and both teachers and parents, we've gotten nothing but positive feedback on that. So,
And, and I'm happy to amend it to say that we remove standard reference reporting or SRR from our, our, our middle school to be in alignment with the following.
And are you, are you wanting that to go into effect immediately? Is that what you're?
No, for the two thousand and eighteen, nineteen school year. So it would be that we actually set the, the deadline for the fall. You know, one of the difficult things, you know, it's like when you decide to go on vacation. You know, it's hard to pick where you want to go. But knowing exactly where you want to go, then the planning of it becomes a lot easier. And so I think if we actually take a, a, a deadline to the committee, then it actually makes the work a little more productive, because they know that they have to meet a timeframe. Sort of like, you know, our students. You know, if they have to write a term paper, but we don't give them a deadline, does the term paper get written? No. But we give them deadlines to meet, and what it does is it actually makes them a little more diligent in accomplishing that goal. And like I said, we already know what the end result is. We want a system that's in alignment with what the high school currently does, because it's where the high school is where it matters and where the grades are actually important.
My only concern, and if I could.
Hold on. Need a second before we go on.
Oh, apologies.
Is there a second?
Oh, is that an official, is the motion amended?
The, the motion's amended.
Do you have the amended motion? Okay. So there's a motion. Is there a second?
I second the motion.
Okay. Is there any discussion?
Oh, and if you look at the slide, it says in June of two thousand and eighteen, the communicate the results in the formal transition plan's already there. So you guys are already ready to go in the fall.
That is the plan, yes.
Just putting the,
Yes.
The pieces to the puzzle together.
May I, may I comment at all, just briefly, and I promise I'll be brief. My only concern is the ambiguity of standard reference reporting. What that means and what that exactly is, I don't know if there's a defined enough definition in that, that we might be trying to beat around the bush relative to what that is. Our, our middle school staff is already committed to going to a point space system relative to that. If they wanted to use a point space system and average points while still reporting out on the big topics, or the big ideas, is that standard reference reporting, and is lined enough? And how often will we have to come back to the board to revisit that topic relative to that level of ambiguity? So that is my only concern.
I, I think that's a good point, because there's aspects of, I think the biggest pushback that I have heard in my frustrations with the SRR was was not the breaking it out of measuring specific skill sets. It was the four-three-two-one grading system, and it was the power grading. Was, the power law was confusing to some of the parents as well as teachers. And the teachers didn't understand it, they couldn't explain it to the parents, and that created a lot of frustration. So I personally, as a board member, I like that we're breaking out the skill sets. I don't know that that is what the teachers are balking at. My understanding was that what they're balking at is the four-three-two-one and the actual numbers that we were using, going back to a more traditional. So are, are you, when, when you're making this motion for the SRR, are you wanting those specific skill sets to be taken out? Or are you just wanting to do away with four-three-two-one? I just want you to clarify.
Naturally, it's the four-three-two-one.
Okay.
It's also, we want to make sure that it's in alignment with what the high school does. If the high school, you know, if, if they have standards, I mean, then it's in alignment. You know, and I think, I think that's where, you know, that's the most important language in it. I mean, we're going to remove what, what we consider the SRR system, which is the four-three-two-one, it's, it's those things. If the underlying parts of it are in alignment with what we currently do at the high school, then that's fine, because we're, we're currently doing it. And that's the, that's the language that takes a lot of that ambiguity out, because it's in alignment with what the high school is currently doing. Because again, that's where grades matter, and we need to be in alignment with what we do there.
Well, here's my concern. I, I think when you look at how our board interacts with our staff and how the processes that we follow, we have a very strong and firm record, a path of how we do that. And it starts with the board giving direction or guidance. Usually, we start in a work session and a topic comes up, and we give guidance to the staff, and then they go through the process that was outlined there. This is really unprecedented for us to make a motion ordering something that we can't really define yet, because the process is actually going to define it and say that it has to be implemented by a certain date. So I'm uncomfortable having this motion, because it's not how we typically do things. We give the staff the chance to go and flesh it out and come up with what needs to be done. So I'm uncomfortable doing that for that reason. So I'm going to vote no, not because I don't think we should do it and aim for having it in, in the fall. I think we're on path for that. I don't see the need for the motion, and I think it's a poor precedent to set, and it's almost a disrespect to our staff when they're working diligently on this to, to do that. And I will tell you, I feel like it's being done because it is your last meeting and you want to make sure that it happens when you're not here. So that is my opinion, and I will vote no.
You just stated most of what I was getting ready to say, but, and I would also say, we don't want our staff to feel like we're trying to come in and bully them and tell them what they have to do. They're working very diligently already to try to work through this process. They've kept us updated. I don't think that we've been left out of their loop at all whatsoever.
And I have no fear that it's going to move at the appropriate pace.
And I appreciate your opinion. I, I disagree, because we had this conversation last summer in our, our work session, and I was prepared to make the motion back then. I was asked not to. I was asked to give time to, to do the survey, to do all those things, in which, you know.
Which has happened.
We did. And, you know, seventy-two percent of our staff says we need to go back to a traditional system. And so I just want to make sure that we do respect our staff's wishes, you know, because when three-quarters of this.
I think I can guarantee you that the board members sitting here are going to respect the staff's wishes.
Well, absolutely. But at the same time, you know, to me, moving it to committee, which is, which is a fine way to do it, because you get the input. The last thing I want to see is it being kicked, you know, kicking the can down the road. You know, when, when three-quarters of our teachers say that this isn't in our students' best interest, to allow it to go even another year, to me, I mean, that's, I mean, it, it's, it's not what our board should be doing, you know.
I would think that's what we're doing, and I'll, I'll make that my last.
I say, I think we're on, I don't like the one-two-three-four. We've had issues with it as a parent in the district. I've had teachers who couldn't really explain it. I've investigated it myself. I don't like it. I do like the part, like Kim said, that we do break out the little subcategories or whatever. That is pretty helpful. But I think we are already on track to get that fall implementation. It's just a matter of what part of, what steps do we, what, I guess not steps, but what parts, the little tasks, the standards. What do we want to maybe keep of that and just do away with the one-two-three-four, but have, maybe keep those standards or whatever, to go back to the more traditional. But I think it's already on the way from what I'm reading here to be implemented in the fall. It's just working out all those little kinks and little details.
And that ties into what I was going to say about this topic. I think we are on a clear path here at this point in time. I do think one of the challenges with the, the standards-based system as it is now at the middle school is we probably didn't get the full buy-in of staff early on and agree on enough things early on. And that was nobody's fault, it's just kind of how it happens. And that's where I think Dr. Volker is, in that we want to make sure we're bringing the staff along with us and, and we're going along with them as well in terms of identifying what those ultimate pieces are going to be to make it work right for everybody, we hope. So that's why our interest is let the process work through as we've defined it, because we want them to have ownership in the end of what the system is. And that way, we can almost ensure that it's going to be effective moving forward. So that's kind of our path in our mind.
I'll just say two more things and, and then let it go to vote. I did ask for the, after the survey came out, I asked for it to be added at the next meeting. So it being added to this one was purely coincidence, because I actually asked for it early.
I will, I will affirm that versus last month versus this month, and given last month's was such a long agenda, we moved it to this one.
And then the, the last thing that I'll say is that, you know, I, I know that the, the district is moving in the direction, but to allow this to go even one more year, to me, I think is irresponsible, which is why I think, I think it's important to set a date. You know, that's my opinion, for what it's worth.
So SR has been one of my frustrations. It's one of the things that brought me to running for the board. And I always want to do things with excellence, and this has been a lot of change with everything, and so you've got to pace out your change. I do agree, I, I want to see this implemented by fall. I think I've been consistent on my approach on SR, but I also, as we've had countless conversations, I agree with what you're trying to do the majority of the time. I don't always agree with how. And so this is one of those situations. I agree with what you're trying to do. I want this implemented in the fall, but I, I would be voting no, because I don't agree with how on this. So is there any other discussion? So we need to take a vote. So all those in favor? All those opposed? Motion is denied. Brian, thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Volker. We are now on action items. February 2018 ridership, that is.
Dr. Petten Gill.
Dr. Petten Gill.
Hopefully, this is slightly less controversial. DESI does require school boards to approve a ridership report twice a year in October and February. The ridership report includes all pupils that regularly ride a bus, which by definition means they ride at least one direction once per week, is what regular ridership means. So with that being said, a ridership report is in board docs and for your inspection. But I would be happy to answer any questions associated with it.
Question, and you may not know the answer right now, and I'm not trying to pitch you on the spot. Do we know how many more students are walking this year since we've really enforced our perimeters? Do we have a lot more walkers?
I think most of that would be anecdotal data. You'd have to talk to the principals. I mean, we could like it, that's a number I could ask the principals for and get that for you. Obviously, at both of our middle schools and high school, we have next to zero walkers because of location. In terms of elementary, I would say it depends on the weather.
We, we do have more in some regards, because it used to be Bridle Ridge and Eagle Glen would bring in from such large areas, and now there are more neighborhood schools, so there's a higher percentage of their kids are within the walking boundaries now than it used to be. So those would be an increase, and then where we did make adjustments in the, the walking perimeter, those would be an increase as well.
Any other questions? Is there a motion?
I move to approve the two thousand, February 2018 student ridership report.
Second.
All those in favor? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Petten Gill.
Thank you for all your work on the bus stuff.
Yes.
It's a lot of work.
We are now on staffing. Dr. Lisa Hatfield.
Good evening. As you'll recall, at our work session on March 8th, we discussed a lot related to the budget for next year, including some of the staffing requests that we felt were necessary, and those were divided into four priority levels. At the end of that meeting, we said that we would bring back to you this evening those items that we had listed as priority one for the 18-19 school year. Tonight, we're asking for you to approve the staffing additions, so that we may move forward with hiring for the upcoming school year. The first item, we are asking for four-point-three-zero net FTE. I believe that might be the first time I've asked for a point-three-zero, but that is to increase the theater arts teacher that we have at the middle school. You'll see there on the list, we are adding sixth-grade teachers due to enrollment, high school science, high school special education, as well as some other positions there. And then there is also a reduction of an FTE at the elementary level, because of the cohort going into fifth grade is a smaller class. The second item on the list is the reconfiguration of our facilities department. This involves the addition of a facilities director, as well as reclassification of some of our other positions within that department. And then finally, we, we are asking for you to approve the addition of some extra duty stipends. You can see those listed there. Those, again, are to expand student programming, as well as make sure we have proper supervision with the numbers of students that are participating in those activities. The items before you come to a total of two-hundred-and-ninety-eight-thousand-two-hundred-and-eighty dollars. So just shy of three-hundred-thousand dollars to make these additions, and we are asking for your approval this evening, so we may move forward.
Are there any questions?
Quick question, and we just kind of briefly talked about it in the work session. At some point later, if we decide to add some stipends for the elementary clubs, is that something that can be done later then?
Yes, we'll, you know, we have multiple decisions we can make, and part of that will depend on what happens on April 3rd.
Got you. Thank you. And I think it's due time for our district our size to have a facilities director to oversee all the many things that goes on with this district, as much as we do in-house and everything.
Thank you.
And is the National Junior Honor Society assistant, is that in both of the middle schools?
It is enrollment-dependent, or not enrollment, I apologize, membership-dependent. So it depends on how many kids. That's where the request came from, because at East specifically, there were so many kids being inducted in January that one person wasn't enough to supervise. So if South, absolutely.
Any other questions or comments? Is there a motion?
I move to approve the 2018-19 proposed staff additions.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Motion passes. Thank you, Dr. Hatfield.
Thank you for being so on top of all that and keeping track.
Yes. We are now on site improvement bids. Dr. Petten Gill.
Hello again. As previously, previously discussed with the board, significant work was done to determine what capital projects needs were for the district. With the assistance of our maintenance department, in-site design, studio, Call Valley Engineering, areas of highest need were determined. Request or proposal was advertised and bids were opened on March 14th. We had bids from six vendors, and Phillips Paving submitted the lowest bid. We've worked with Phillips in the past, and I've been very happy with their work, so that was, we were happy to see them come in low. The project includes significant work at three locations. At Eagle Glen Parking Lots, our highest need parking lot, looking at doing an, just an edge mill, where you, you don't have to completely mill off the whole parking lot, but you take down the edge, so that it's a smooth from the curb out and do a two-inch overlay. There's also some curb and sidewalk work needed there.
Jason, you can stay at the top, please.
At Raymore Elementary, we were gonna, I mean, that parking lot's also aging. We have to crack seal and seal coat several areas, refill in all the cracks and then put a nice seal coat across the top. The aprons, if you'll notice off of Madison Street, are crumbling. They're in, in bad shape, so there's, that's quite a project, process to complete. Sidewalk, there's some sidewalk pieces that need replaced there, that are causing some of our doors to pin. Some reconfiguration of the cottage area, assuming we can get somebody to take that thing. And we have, we have backup plans. So Timber Creek Elementary Playground site work, obviously Timber Creek. Not sure if the board's aware, but there's a, there's a high need for a new playground at Timber Creek, so we're excited about moving forward with that.
We're aware. We're aware.
Oh, okay. But this piece of the playground project is for demolitions, prepping the site, a lot of the asphalt, concrete, sod and seeding, all of that. A playground's a very complex area. You have this component, you have to then buy the equipment, then you have to prep the surface with the turf and the padding, so.
Are we going to add a security system as well, given all the vandalism this year?
Well, as soon as that was discovered who it was, we had that, that really stopped it. So kudos to our night security and law enforcement. There's also some ancillary projects in there mixed in that aren't broke out specifically, but they're part of the big picture. A drainage swell out here that where water holds there, where the recycling bin is between, just outside of the academy. There's a piece of concrete needed for the protective cage for our baseball, softball batters. And then there's a sidewalk at the high school that needs to be added, so those are included there. On top of the base bid, we did alternate out a couple things, like we always do with these, till we looked to see what we had to work with and where they came in at. We had a patron make it very clear, and I've worked with her a couple times, and she makes some good points. We need a sidewalk at Eagle Glen. Right now, if you're over there and the walkers coming in, they walk just with cones. I did have it separated out. Instead of doing the, the bollards and striping, we did actually add a full, complete sidewalk on the west side of that western entrance. I think that's important. Our alternate two was prevent some ponding at Eagle Glen in the low areas that, that was going to take some more work, and we, you know, as we only have so much in a pot to work with, we wanted to make, see where we were at, but that came in low, I would support that as well. There are some shallow areas at Eagle Glen, when the pavement gets a little thin, when they try to just go over, it could give out, so that's marked out. And the reason that number is not more in Alt. 3 is because of the work that we committed there last year. If you remember, we put twenty thousand dollars worth of work into the shallow areas at Eagle Glen to repair, put a band-aided on, if you will. So that saves us money this year that we won't have to do as much. Alternate four, we had to break out that pricing, because the city of Raymore will have to vote on that. They actually own that parking lot back to the right at Raymore, but we want, we went ahead and had Phillips bid it out for us, so that could be a separate price. There's a full-depth repair and a marked-out area of Raymore at the, when you're coming in where the car riders are, as you're going back towards the Memorial Park, there's an area that's, that needs significant work, where it'll be a full mill and replacement. And then finally, some of them, we did have them pull out separate if the cottage didn't sell, so that was an alternate six. With all that being said, the recommendation is to approve the base bid and alternates one, two, three and five. Obviously, you don't replace four, you won't vote on four. That's a, such, an alternate for the city of Raymore to vote on. From Phillips Paving, an amount of four-hundred-and-sixty-three-thousand-three-hundred-and-fourteen dollars, plus a contingency of five percent for any unforeseen construction conditions, along with associated design and testing cost.
Question.
Yes.
I know it comes down to money, but at some point, how many of these things that we're doing are just Band-Aids again?
This is, this is catching up from a lot of Band-Aids for a lot of years, you know, due to finances and budgeting, you can only do so much. I really feel that we are getting our arms around it. With the addition of the facilities director, that also gives me an expert, as a right-hand person, to really tackle these even more so. And a lot of that work's been handled with our maintenance department so far.
Thank you.
I had, maybe it's the same thing.
We need to recheck the math on the total, Brian.
I, I think that is still the low bid, but there is a problem with the math in the spreadsheet.
Which alternate were we not selecting, just to make sure?
Four.
Four.
Are there any questions or comments why they checked them out?
Did you reach out to the city of Raymore to see if there was an opportunity to cost share on that portion of the, the parking lot that they own or is on their property?
Yeah, they're, they will be paying for that. That's why it's broken out. It's completely separate. My math off.
Four-fifty-three, five-twenty-four is what I get. What was the motion language?
Four-sixty-three, three-fourteen.
So we're excluding number four, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, four-fifty-three, five-twenty-four.
Is there any more comments, or is there, is someone ready, is there a motion? You want the, but you need the new number.
Five, four-fifty-three, five-twenty-four?
Yes. Yes.
Let me double-check one more time before we take off.
At least I'm off the good direction.
Might as well fix it now, just to make sure.
Where are we at on the cottage?
You might as well explain that while we're doing this, so.
We had a minimum bid of $1,000 for the cottage, um, and bids were to be opened on Tuesday, and we did not have any, um, interest. So we had no bidders at 1,000. At this point, the, the price point would be at zero. Um, that, the cost associated, it's a very nice building, it's very large, is part of the downside. You know, when you're talking about a 60 by 48 building, it's, there's a significant cost in moving it. I've visited with a couple of different churches that were interested and would like to have the building. It's just the cost associated with moving it makes it prohibitive.
You might also explain the playground, rest of the playground equipment that will come later.
Okay. Um, something you'll see in the next few months, hopefully maybe next month. Um, we're using a co-op for the equipment for sure, and then, um, looking at the surface. Um, the total Timber Creek Playground numbers that we have to date, uh, the equipment, using the standard that we've set with Eagle Glen and Bridle Ridge as setting a standard for our elementaries, comes to $71,868. And the surface for the turf, um, and the padding underneath it and everything comes to about 88, well, comes to $88,690. When you put all that together, the number, our estimates that we brought to you before was $250,000 to be spent on the playground, and when you take the equipment, the surface, and the site work, it's $253,000 and change. So our, our estimate was very close.
Ruth, your revised number is 463, 014. We will revise this bid tab later, but that will be the amount.
Yes, so is there a motion?
I move to approve the base bid and alternates one, two, three, and five from Phillips Paving in the amount of $463,014, plus a contingency of 5% for any unforeseen construction conditions, along with costs associated with design and testing.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Motion passes.
Apologize for the confusion.
That's fine, thank you for taking care of that now. Thank you, Dr. Petten Gill, and I really appreciate that you guys caught that and are good at that, so. I love the balance of our team. Um, committee reports. So, any, any committee reports?
I, we had the Sitenson Advisory Committee on March 7th, and of course, the big topic was school safety. Um, we just kind of talked on our different tables about, uh, different areas at the schools that could maybe use some updating, maybe not the, maybe not the correct, correct word, um, just some concerns that some of the staff had, um, some areas that we have looked at. We discussed, you know, doors and just different security things that could be changed for the better, could be, you know, um, secure entrances, some communication, things that maybe we could put in place to better help if it happens an intruder comes in. Uh, maybe some cameras in different areas that we don't have them, or just a whole lot of discussion on, um, security and school safety and keeping those kids safe. One thing that came up is we've, um, and I've talked to several teachers about it. Parents are getting upset when they're asked for ID. Something we have discussed is maybe putting that in the RAPAC update. Um, so it is for your kid's safety, it, so we don't give your kid to the wrong person that's not supposed to have them, or they just don't, you know, anybody can come check your kid out, it's for their safety. Um, one teacher I talked to said that she had a parent get upset because she asked for ID in, in the car rider line because she's never seen this parent pick up the child. It's usually the other parent, so again, it's for safety. Um, there was some discussion, probably not anytime soon, is an SRO at every building. We are probably unfortunately having to go to that, but that's going to be in the long future, I hope, but we'll see. But it was just a really good discussion, and then of course, the Proposition RP was also brought up. You know, that was another discussion of things. And the next meeting is April 25th.
Um, I, I had a PD development meeting. Um, again, we have some awesome teachers, you know, and they are so excited to learn and to share that with each other. You know, I actually had to hear Dr. Volker tell one of his teachers, no, you can't do it, because she was so wanting to be able to do what she needed to for her students in regards to safety and stuff. And, and it was nice to hear him say, that's not your job. You know, so our teachers are desperately wanting to do the right things. And so for anyone who would doubt that, come sit in any of these meetings, and you can hear our teachers' passion for our students. Uh, we had our REC meeting, uh, we chose our Belcher Scholarship recipient from our region. I believe it came from Pleasant Hill. Again, we had like 18 scholarship applications that were just phenomenal from students around our area. Um, I got to help judge some enrichment presentations at the South Middle School. Um, interesting, they, the kids would pick a problem they felt like that the South Middle School had, and then what would they do to fix that problem? And, uh, Mr. Randolph sat in there on part of them, and he was really good with, uh, talking back and forth with them and saying, okay, if you look at it from our perspective, and this is maybe where we could come together on it. So I think those students learned a lot from those presentations. Uh, nominating committee, I had a meeting on that last week in Columbia. Um, it's the slate of leadership that will go to MSBA delegates in June. Um, the next three years of leadership are in good hands. We've got three great people in the pipeline for MSBA leadership the next three years. Uh, had a legislative webinar the other day, and then I think we all, some of us attended the National Honor Society induction the other night, and that was really nice.
Any other reports, committee reports?
We're working on getting the Audit Finance Committee rescheduled after our snow day.
Ryan and I sit on the policy committee, and I'm excited to be transitioning to a new policy company that's not, that the wording's not so convoluted that, um, creates confusion. So looking forward to working on that transition.
And that's just a warning that there's going to be a lot of work involved over the next three months for our board, because most of our existing policies will be replaced by something similar, but not the same. So we're gonna, uh, the committee's going to focus on the ones that we have customized ourselves over the last five years or so first, and then by the time we get to the retreat in June, you're going to have lots of reading to do. So I'm just warning you now, and you're, you're welcome not to have to do that.
A lot of similar content, just style differences.
Yes, yes, simpler, straightforward language.
Yes, which really saves us from issues down the road. Clear policy is very helpful. Um, any other committee reports? All right, moving on to superintendent's report.
Well, obviously, election day is 12 days away on April 3rd, and it's obvi, a very important time for our school district, as it is every year in April. Our voters will decide two different matters this year. First of all, is the filling of our two board seats that are open, so we have six candidates there. We have information on our website, uh, and you probably can access now the, uh, Raymore, uh, version of the Board Candidate Forum last night online. I'm not sure exactly how that works yet, but, and it may not be posted yet, but it, which should be soon. And then, of course, Proposition RP is April 3rd as well, so we encourage all of our voters in the community to get out and vote on April 3rd. I want to thank our PTA Council, Tara's here this evening, and the Raymore Chamber for hosting those board candidate forums. It presents a great opportunity for our community to get to know our candidates, who they'll be voting on, and obviously, these folks have the direction of the district in, in hand, and it's a very important job that they get paid exactly nothing for. So, uh, we appreciate our candidates who expressed interest in putting their names out there, uh, to be leaders in our school district. I want to thank, uh, Peculiar Police Department for their efforts to control traffic the last week. Um, obviously, with this next phase of school road, uh, closure, we've gotten, uh, almost a bigger challenge than we've ever had in terms of the traffic management, and it's been a challenge, no doubt, uh, but it's gotten better every day. And we're getting now back to where the times of arrival and dismissal look pretty much like they did in the fall, maybe just an extra couple of minutes longer because of not having any north access at this point. So it's gotten a lot better, and it's only working because the PD is out here, uh, directing traffic at those peak times. So we very much appreciate their effort with that, and we, we, uh, appreciate the, uh, patience of our families. I know it's been difficult, um, with this big change, but it's, it's kind of moving into a routine at this point. I want to congratulate our high school band and choir kids. We have about 50 students qualified for state this year, so that's a big contingency that'll be heading down with the state competition. We're likely to have some of them here for recognition in the not-too-distant future. Uh, we also have some Special Olympics basketball teams that won state championships or placed a state, uh, last weekend. We'll have some of them probably here in the near future for recognition. Um, on behalf of the entire district, I want to thank Mr. Westcoat, Ms. Davies, for their service to our community on this school board. It's been a pleasure to work with each of you. Our students, staff, and patrons have been well-served by your leadership here on the school board.
Thank you.
And one last thing I would say is, uh, I want everybody to enjoy their spring break next week. Uh, many of us will still be here at the office, but, uh, it will be a time to, uh, relax for just a few, few days while we kind of gear up for those last eight weeks of the semester. Uh, and that's an important time of the year as well, as we work towards spring assessments and graduation and all those events. So looking forward to it.
Thank you, Dr. Muntzis. Uh, any Board of Education comments?
I have a comment. Um, I just wanted to say that the last six years have been very good to me here. Um, I feel like I've learned a lot, I've hopefully made some lifelong friendships. Um, I feel like the board has done some amazing things for our districts and our kids and our community the last few years that I've been here, and I'm really excited and I'm positive that you guys are going to continue on. And I can't wait to see what the next few years have in store, so thank you.
Thank you.
And I just wanted to say thank you, um, for serving. I know that we don't always agree, but I think that we always have the best interests, uh, of kids in mind, and we each approach it from a different perspective. Um, I think that over the last year, I think that we did get some very positive things done, and, and I, I want to thank you for, a, a, at times tolerating me, because I know I approach things from a different perspective. Um, but I think that it's important that, you know, we make sure that, you know, our constituents, um, staff, you know, they see us that is the leaders of the district that we're truly designed to be. So I want to thank each one of you for serving with me.
Any other board comments?
Um, I would just like to, you know, we talk about the elections coming up, and we always talk about how things start at home for our kids. You know, they learn what they learn at home to start. Go vote! You know, we talk about our civic duties and, and the things we should do as, as productive citizens of our communities. Go vote, let your kids see you go vote, take your kids with you to go vote. I've got my last one voting for the first time, and I can't wait, you know, I've, go vote, let your kids see you do it. That's how they're going to learn how it's important.
Any, um, I would thank you. You both have served with all of your heart, for sure, so I really appreciate that. Um, I want to, um, encourage everyone to go look at the videos of all of the candidates, um, so you can be an informed voter. We've got some, uh, a lot of great candidates, so, so go online, find the videos, and please vote, so. Calendar of events, we've got April 3rd is the election day, again, please go vote. Um, can I say, and please vote on multiple things that are on the ballot?
That is to encourage responsibility, so that's, that's probably fine.
Thank you. Um, April 12th is our Cass County Kids First Legislative Breakfast. It's the 13th, ah, thank you, 13th down in Harrisonville. Let Pam know if you're able to make it. Um, April 16th is our reorganization meeting at 6:00 PM. Make sure you've got that on your calendar. And then April 26th is our next board meeting. With all of that, this meeting is adjourned, thank you.